Get started with the roll call.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee King.
Here.
Trustee Marquez is absent. Vice President Weasley.
President.
President Walts.
Here. All right, welcome to our October 22nd, 2025 regular meeting of the Redwood City School District Governing Board. Bienvenidos, sir, a querer interpretación al español, por favor llama al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete. Y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno y el signo de numero. Si asiste a la reunión en persona, solicita y transmisión situada al fondo de la sala. The board encourages all members of the public to participate and provide comments on issues of concern regardless of whether they're on the agenda. If you're here in person and wish to speak, please complete a speaker's card at the entrance to the room and then hand it to Evelyn. If you're on Zoom, you can complete a speaker's card online using the form linked from the agenda, or just raise your Zoom hand when the item comes up. And if you're addressing a subject listed on the agenda, you'll be called at the time that the item is being considered. And if it's not on the agenda, you'll be called shortly during the oral communication agenda item. And then, to be fair to all speakers, we're going to limit public comments to three minutes per person per topic unless otherwise noted. So now we are on to changes to the agenda. There's been one request to pull policy discussion item 7.4. That's the first reading and discussion of BP and AR 4121 temporary substitute personnel. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Great. Um, that brings us to public comment. I saw no hands and no online cards and no in-person cards. Let's move on. Our first item is going to be a school and community report. And our first one's Integrated ELD and it's the instructional, the Integrated ELD Instructional Coaching Report. So, Anna?
Trying to get everything up. Um, so tonight we're going to have our multilingual director Catherine Rivera, who's going to be sharing with us, with you, the ELD report that we have put together. These are some of the things we've been doing for the last two years. So she's going to share what we've been doing and then we'll add some more other information that we probably missed on the slides. Let me just get the slides up and going.
All right. Thank you, Anna. So I'm Catherine Rivera, the multilingual, multilingual director for English learners. And we're going to share a little bit of information with you tonight about some of the things that we've been, some of the initiatives we've been working on in Integrated ELD. All right. So, um, starting off with our guiding principles for English language arts and English language development. So just with our style, with our beliefs about entering into Integrated ELD, what is it that we believe? We believe all students bring strengths and that meaning making is crucial for student learning. Language and literacy develop across disciplines and Integrated ELD and Designated ELD are essential for learning for our multilingual learners. And classroom talk and collaboration are important student voice, students engagement, students talking to each other. All of that matters to support and increase our student learning. And assessments or the results of assessments guide and support learning in the classroom. So it's a little graphic just to break down what is ELD? Because we're talking about Integrated ELD, but we have Integrated and Designated ELD as part of practices and working with multilingual learners. So we look at the blue bubble, Designated ELD. Designated ELD, it's a focused and explicit time of the day. So all of our multilingual learners have Designated ELD as part of their core program during the school day. It's taught by teachers who use the English Language Development Standards as their core guiding document for delivering instruction, planning lessons. And it could be done in small group or could be done in whole group, but it is based on students' language proficiency on, as measured by the LPAC. So once a year, they take the English Language Performance Assessment. We have the results and students are grouped based on what their language proficiency is telling us for this specific and dedicated time for language development. But Integrated ELD, our green bubble, is what we're going to focus on today and our initiative across Redwood City School District. And Integrated is focused on delivering content, designing lessons and planning for content that is taught in English. And so our students all have science, math, PE. And Integrated ELD, English Language Development, is a focus for all of our teachers or nearly all of our teachers, because all of our teachers or almost all have multilingual learners in their classroom. And so it's using language to instruct. And so through, through content, and that's what we're going to be talking about. And so it's all four areas. Next slide. So talking about instructional coaching, purpose of coaching instructional leaders. So instructional leaders, let me define what an instructional leader is so we know who we're talking about. Instructional leaders are all of our administrators. So our principals, our assistant principals, our cabinet members, and including our coaches, our instructional coaches who work with staff development. All of them, all of, all of our leaders, our instructional leaders are going through a series of six cycles of coaching that we started last, this past June and throughout this school year. And it's a collaboration together where we are learning about the components of the English learner roadmap, which I'll talk about in just a second. But the roadmap, which I'm going to share with you as well, because I want to make sure that you guys have a copy so you know what we're talking about. The English learner roadmap, it's an actionable document that we are learning how to use in order to measure the efficacy of us as school leaders and our programs that we have in our schools. In addition, it's a document meant for classroom teachers, for them to be able to measure their own understanding of the English learner roadmap. It aligns practices with the English Language Arts Standards. And actually, maybe I'll just give this to you now so you have it in your hand and you can look at some of this, maybe the colorful guiding principle.
And just to add to some of that, it also is tied very much well with our, our language arts standards. As the language arts standards and ELD standards are very tied together. So it's just a matter of how we're focusing on what we're doing on those standards. And so it takes the standards and then looking at the ELD, what do we need to do during ELD time versus what do we need to do during regular instruction? So really it's practices that are good for all students. ELD standards for multilingual learners benefit from it, but all students benefit because it's about talking and it's about creation. It's about hands-on learning and we know those are practices for every student.
So the EL roadmap was adopted by the State of California Board of Education in 2017. So it is the policy that replaced the 1998 policy for English learners. It is what guides all of California instruction for English learners. And it's based on the English Language Arts, English Language Development frameworks, which were adopted in 2013. It's based on research. And one of the researchers actually worked here for many years with us, Dr. Lori Olson. So the development of the EL roadmap, it's not just Dr. Lori Olson, but she was one of the main researchers of the EL roadmap. She collaborated with Redwood City, in fact, at Hoover School for many years to gather her research. Anna was a part of that research and working and supporting our teachers. And so the four pillars, there are four pillars that make up the EL roadmap. And so the four pillars, the, the, are all intertwined, high-quality curriculum and instruction. So we're looking at our curriculum. We just adopted IAM Math for our middle school and previously have with our K5. We're looking at, we have benchmark, we recently began working a couple of years ago with our supplemental ELD curriculum. So making sure all of our students have high-quality curriculum. Equitable access and opportunities. So not just for core curriculum, but throughout the school day, high-quality teachers, high-quality qualified teachers. Courses, access to the different courses, after-school opportunities, electives, enrichment. So equitable access across all sites for all of our multilingual learners. Assessment and accountability. So we have the LPAC, which is all what our state uses to measure progress annually. But in addition, we have our iReady data for our different subgroups. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about it. We have some new assessments this year specific for our English learners benchmarks throughout the year to measure progress towards LPAC. And then what we are really focusing on in pillar four is empowering our leaders and in turn empowering our educators, supporting the people who are delivering instruction. And that, and their principal two, this is really a big focus across our district is the empowerment and our understand, our common understanding of what quality instruction looks like, the quality delivery looks like for our English learners across Integrated ELD. So it's, you can't have just three of the pillars to be an effective roadmap or effective instruction or delivery for our students. It's like an unequal table. It's like you can have three legs, but if you don't have that fourth one, it's unstable. So we're really striving towards all four pillars. But we recognize we can't do all of the elements of every, every pillar all at once. And so we are focusing right now more intensively on the principal two of instruction, quality instruction. So purpose and goals for our teaching staff as our instructional leaders endeavor to understand and go deeper on the EL roadmap for Integrated ELD. We want to make sure that we are bridging language along with academic achievement because our multilingual learners are doing two things at once. They're learning content, they're learning English at the same time. And so those are two heavy cognitive lifts, right? To learn a second language or for some of our students, a third language, while at the time, at the same time, being held accountable to content standards. We want to make sure that for our, for our teachers, that all of our, they're providing all of our students equitable opportunities in the classroom or even outside of the classroom for learning. And that is through learning instructional practices that best meet the needs of the different learning styles of our multilingual learners. And when if, as Ms. Rivera just said earlier, if it's good for our English learners, we know it's going to benefit all the learners in the classroom. We also want to promote creativity and critical thinking in an inclusive classroom. And so when we are addressing the needs of our English learners, from our newcomers, who are just here either a few weeks, a few months or less than a year, to our long-term English learners, providing a structure for our students in, in the classroom through a set of instructional strategies, practices and skills that our teachers are learning through this instructional leadership, skill building and feedback. The, our goal is of course to increase student achievement, but also have critical thinking students. Oh, what does coaching look like? What is, what is happening in the classrooms or in the schools and with our principals? So principals are going through a series of six coaching cycles. And between those coaching cycles, there's collaboration at our administrative meetings where we are looking at what quality feedback for Integrated ELD looks like. What does it sound like? What is it that we are aligning our understanding of what instruction looks like in the classroom? So that we can give good feedback to our teachers. But in addition, our teachers are in a psych, four different cycles of coaching this year with Dr. Kimberly Sagulon, who you may have seen in previous board memos and contracts. And she is working with some of our school sites in a series of coaching cycles that looks like demonstration lessons where we'll read some research and then she'll demonstrate some skills or strategies using our core content. And then an opportunity for teachers to debrief. In addition, then teachers collaborate with each other. They come together either across school sites or they come through their content area or grade level. And they demonstrate lessons using their newly, or maybe their skills and strategies that they've used before. But they are demonstrating in front of their peers. So their peers come to watch them in the classrooms. And then we debrief and give feedback on practices. And so that's a cycle, four different cycles. Between the cycles though, our instructional coaches are delivering feedback to the, to the teachers and helping hone and refine those new skills that they're learning through each cycle. We started this actually last year with our teaching staff. And so we had seven schools participating, seven schools participating. We had last year Garfield, Hoover, Taft, Roosevelt, MIT and Clifford. And Hoover, did I say, then Henry Ford, sorry, excuse me, and Henry Ford. And then this year we are focusing on Hoover and Garf, I'm sorry, Hoover, Roosevelt and McKinley Institute. So we are doing the four coaching cycles specifically this year. And so the modeling of instructional practices continues though with our, our instructional coaches. And we're making informed decisions using data. So the big piece of data is our LCAP goals. We have LPAC goals that where we are striving to increase the percent of our students who grow one year on their LPAC scores. Ultimately, we want 100%, right? We want all students making one year's growth each year. But right now in our LCAP goal, it's from 40% to 50%. So we're currently at 40%. We're looking at a 10% growth for next year. So that's a, that's a big stretch, but we are feeling really confident that we're putting a lot of practices in place. I'm in addition to the LCAP goals of, we are close to our goal of reducing the percent of our long-term learner, long-term English learners. Our goal, we've superseded our goal for next year already. So we're looking at goal 2027 of being closer to 10% of our students as long-term English learners. And then in addition, we want to increase the number and the percent of students who reclassify to fluent English proficient. So we're looking at those bigger data points, which we only see once a year. But smaller data points are, we have a new assessment, new assessments this year for the first time. Grades K5 are doing benchmark assessments three times a year through Language Power, which is our supplemental ELD curriculum. And so they're in the midst of it right now. Maybe some sites are coming towards the end of it. So where they're doing that right now as we close our first trimester. And then sixth grades, sixth through eighth are using a platform called Summit K12, which mirrors the LPAC and will give teachers assessment results that will mirror the LPAC for the month of October and they're going to take it again in December. So we, but just those two times of year, because an LPAC comes in February, which is just 10 weeks away. So monitoring our students as they are getting closer to the high-stakes state assessment.
In addition, I think, just so you know, the grade levels we're working with with the coaching. This year we added second grade, last year was third through eighth. This year we actually added second grade as well for it. And so also in addition to Summit, we also have, Summit also has a platform for our newcomers. So it's also providing some ELA support for English learners as well, for our very, very beginning students that need some more vocabulary development. So we're also doing that through some of our newcomer classes.
And so a lot of these practices are new. We've always done Designated ELD and Integrated ELD. It's been around for decades, so it's not a new practice, Redwood City, State of California. What we are doing this year that's different, and we started a little bit of it last year, is being very intentional in tightening our ELD plan. And we tighten our monitoring of ensuring that our students are appropriately placed, that we are adhering to schedules and instructional minutes and an increase of using some formative data along the way to see how our students are doing to ultimately meet or exceed our LCAP goals. And so all of this is new and different compared to what we had done in the past. It's really building the capacity of our instructional leaders along with our teachers. It's always been my belief and I got a chance to share this with one of our trustees that, that teach it for me. Building teacher capacity is the best way to improve instruction. And that, making sure that our teachers have the tools that they need and, and feeling successful and giving them the feedback along the way. We all thrive off of what we need to improve on and what we've done well. And so giving them the feedback and as we are, as leaders aligned to what we're looking for and what's high-quality instruction. This is a new practice because we are doing it together and we are using the EL roadmap. That's, that's different this year. So again, this is, this is ultimately our outcomes is increased educator confidence, instructional clarity across each classroom, across each site and then across the district. Stronger student academic language in the class, academic discourse amongst the peers and greater engagement and inclusivity. Engagement can be measured by student voice, student collaboration, student talk. And so engagement, we can measure it in different ways. That was my personal take on it is the collaboration and the student voice that includes all students in the classroom. So next steps, refinement, right? We are in year, really year one, so engaging and continuing in this practice and refining our coaching moves as we refine our leadership feedback. So that is something that we are doing at our administrative meetings with Wendy Kelly, with Dr. Baker and Anna. And then can build continuously building the capacity of, of our leaders, which include emergent leaders. We know that many of our teachers, hopefully, well, some of our teachers will be emergent leaders in the Redwood City School District one day. So as well as building the capacity for instructional coaches. And then continuing to use data cycles to monitor and improve instruction and outcomes for our multilingual English learners. Questions?
I thank you Catherine for the presentation. As she said, does anyone have questions or comments or? Dave, please.
Well, I'll just say this is really helpful, super exciting. There's a lot of things that I just, that I saw that are really encouraging. So thanks for bringing it together. I think one thing great to hear about the, where we are on our LCAP two goals, right? Kind of ahead of schedule or making good progress. So it's very exciting, looking forward, I don't want to get too out of myself, but looking forward to the mid-year reports, see where things go. And I think that ties also to hearing that there's more interim assessments or figuring out ways to monitor where we are. So we're not just like end of the year, did we make it or not? So that's really exciting. And then I think it's also a testament to the, the work that's going to, not again, this is a little, but when we look at the iReady data, we can see that specifically among the EL groups and more so among the LTEL group, that the, the expected growth has, we, we have seen increases year over year. So super exciting. They, the only question that I had was, I think you mentioned that there are four schools this year that we're focusing on Hoover, MIT, Clifford.
Roosevelt.
And Roosevelt. How, what's the rationale for focusing on those four?
And so we had, last year we had a focus of all our schools that were in ATSI. So we had to create a plan. So this year, what we decided with Garfield and Taft, they're doing the new pilot for Benchmark. So having do this and that was going to be a little bit too much. So we decided that they, their focus would be Benchmark and piloting the new Benchmark and getting them going. So they're also having demonstration lessons there through Benchmark as well. So they're doing their own thing, a little separate and of the focus. And so we were really intentional about what other schools we wanted to continue and where we had coaches currently. And so we wanted to make sure, part of the work that really leads some of this work is that the coaching and planning that needs to go along with it. And so we don't have coaches at each of our sites. But the coaches that we do have are at sites and they build a rapport with teachers. So there's already some trust of planning and working and demoing together. So we wanted to continue that because we don't want to take that away from them yet. So even Garfield and Taft still have their coaches, but their code, their focus is more on the Benchmark and reading comprehension. And so we're really trying to build that capacity there.
Okay, that's super helpful. So it sounds like it's not a taking the guess. It's, we got to prioritize a couple of things, but like we're still focused on this and okay.
And with that, even our coaching that's going through with Dr. Sagulon, because we had our CRP three through eighth grade, actually his focus is reading comprehension. Dr. Sagulon is taking what we've learned from CRP, using those protocols and planning with those teachers to make that come to life. Because part of it is we went to the training, now we have to put it into practice. So she's working with it to come, put it into practice. So those demonstration lessons that are happening are actually practicing the routines of CRP. So we're, it's two in one, we're trying to do to maximize what teachers are doing.
Jen, do you have comments, questions, anything you want to add?
I just want to say thank you again. And thank you for answering my questions and kind of filling in today. It's, it's just amazing how much is going on and if we can see the improvement continue, that'd be really great.
David Weekly?
Chris, hey. I, I thank you by the way for updating the presentation to give clear explanations for the definitions. I'm sure I was not the only one to appreciate the clarity of language there. So thank you so much. Thank you also for underscoring what's new, what we're changing versus prior years. That was, that was super helpful. I had had a question in terms of the board memo saying that the funding was coming from arts, music instructional materials. And I realized only in real time that that was a abbreviation of arts, comma, music, comma, and instructional material as the grant source. And I was just confused because it's not arts material or music material, but it is instructional material. And so that makes it make sense. So I just wanted to, to note that. Love the incorporation of peer observation and feedback. That's something that teachers have been asking for and that also has really good demonstrated effects. There's great research about people generally getting better at a thing if they're observed and get feedback on their doing of a thing. And surprise, surprise, teaching is not different than that. Vigorously in agreement with your statement that building teacher capacity is the best way to improve instructional quality and giving teachers the feedback that they need is fantastic. We've picked some great curriculum. I think what we're doing here to rigorously adhere to the consistent administration of that curriculum to get differentiated outcomes is exactly what we want to see. Question, I want to make sure that I parsed what you were saying, Anna, correctly. You said we recently added second grade, we were doing third grade and above. And so we're, we're sort of just beginning to.
The demonstrations. So last year we worked with third through eighth grade in our demonstrations and worked with Dr. Sagulon. So we decided this year to bring on second grade because it's capacity building, right? And so second grade, it's, it's, we, we decided at these three sites that we really, we would love to be able to do K5, but it's capacity building. Coaches only have a depth, right? So we wanted to add one more because at Hoover, we were only working with third through fifth. And so we, that second grade team was easier to match because we matched it with Roosevelt. So what happens is the second grade teachers that Catherine says, they're planning together across Hoover and Roosevelt's because each only have two. So it's kind of nice to bring them together, plan, and then they demonstrate for their own sites. So we, this is just something we decided to do this year is to bring on the second grade teachers at these two sites.
I think it's fantastic and I bet you can anticipate my next question.
Well, we want to continue to roll it out. Again, one of the, one of the nice caveats this year has been because we know and, and you know, as you guys know, iReady, our comprehension is lacking. And so our focus is comprehension. So whether that is at our pilot sites, they're doing Benchmark, which are working on the comprehension. And then specifically at these sites, that's what we're working on is really comprehension. How do we make everything that we have accessible in terms for students, right? For our English learners, English language learners. We, I just went yesterday to a, a quick PD here in Millbrae focused on English learners and talking about how children need to be speaking all the time, you know, especially our multilingual learners. And oftentimes we go into a classroom and it's silent, right? And so the oracy part of it is so important for all our students and they couldn't emphasize that. In fact, I didn't have a chance to share because I don't have the slides yet, but everything on the thing was oracy, oracy, oracy for every single one of those LPAC things because it starts with oracy and then it goes into the.
The word you're using, oracy?
It's oral speaking, speaking. And the, the practice of, of talking, right? So it's, we are, that's one of the things we're trying to get to change is like, if we have children talking first, then they can, you know, practice with syntax and practice expanding their language and then we can then do it with visualization. So it's, it's a lot of different components that come together. And Dr. Sagulon is an expert in that. And so she's really trying to teach the, the teachers how to make what we're trying to do become very explicit.
That's fantastic. Do you have any idea of like in terms of timing for when we could make this kind of, these demonstrations and this enrichment available for TK, K and first because?
We can get Dr. Sagulon to move up here. We can adopt her. She lives in LA. She lives in, in Southern California. She's also a professor at the university. She's also a professor at the university. So I mean, we adopted her, I call her, she's adopted to us. She's pretty much here sometimes at a week at a time. I mean, she just brings so much rich and we know that the teachers, she makes learning for our teachers to be. I mean, Catherine could share what happened with special education teachers. And wow, she just creates this ambiance for teachers and makes it comprehensible of how change can be so small, right? And so it doesn't have to be this big thing, but it's it's very intentional.
So who do we have to arm wrestle to get her up here? The PK, the K.
Your children. But she is up here at a week at a time. She she was just here this Monday with us. And Tuesday, we actually just did a walkthrough because part of this, we're also doing walkthroughs with her. So we had the opportunity to be at Adelante. We had our K five principals there. We did a walkthrough with Adelante. We talked about feedback. We talked about what did we see next steps for the principal? Our next visit with her is we're going to do a middle school as well. So we don't have those built in throughout the year yet. We did just choose to because we're trying to focus on giving feedback, right? Where everything that we're doing in education around is really based around this feedback form. And so she's helping us create the lens for our principals on using the roadmap to help create the feedback that we want to be intentional in our practices. So we have added her and we know teachers really do, she really does bring this expertise to all of us. I mean, I have to say I learn from her every single time she's here. And so I think it's something that we want to continue for next year.
I mean, this it sounds great, but to to sound a little bit like a broken record, I think like if we have English learners who are joining us in TK and in Kinder, we really need to have them fully English proficient by end of third grade. And so having these initiatives that are running third to eighth and now second to eighth is like is great. And I I worry a little bit that like where the focus is most urgently needed is on those lower grades. So anything that we could do to get that additional supplementation for the lower grades would would be really fantastic. Because if we can get these kids, the vast majority of these kids, and I know we've made it been making great progress on on this front. But if we can get the vast majority of these kids who join us in Kinder, fully proficient by end of third grade, that'll take care of so many other problems down the line. So thank you so much for your.
We do have a grant.
Yeah.
That's on PD for next year, for the next three years, right? Three years? So that will continue so that on professional development. So we can continue with Dr. Sagulon and expanding. We just we just started because we were really focused in on making the change with our test scores on comprehension and really making it. That's why we focus on through through eighth grade, but we know that it's critical to be in K one, two as well.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Great, thanks, thanks Catherine for the presentation. I'd heard a lot from from side administrators about the TCM professional development. How does that fit in? Is that more around the designated ELD or is that part of integrated as well?
Yeah, so TCM started as designated DLD very specifically because we purchased their product, which is Language Power. And so we worked with TCM and we worked with multiple coaches. So they were coaches from different different walks of life. And that was that worked well to to roll out designated ELD. But as we've moved towards the focus and we got designated DLD up and running, not that we don't need to continue refining those practices. We definitely have areas of growth. But as we moved more towards integrated ELD, we moved specifically more with Dr. Kimberly Sagulon and continue partnering with TCM in terms of purchasing their products, but not their coaching.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. And then you had you'd mentioned the curriculums that we've adopted over the last time. I think we used to call it illustrative math that changed names. No, it is still illustrative math. Okay, okay, something changed in there, the company name or something. But the how is that like anecdotally, how is that working well? Is it is it good for integrated ELD?
IM math, IM, well, so IM has a component of how to use IM to for our multilingual learners. But the strategies and the skills that teachers are learning in integrated ELD, which there we're using more in English language arts can be applied to any content area. So it's not specific to math. We've heavily focused on reading comprehension, but all those strategies can be then applied to math.
Great. And then you called this year one of implementation, like how many years of the is there on the roadmap? And we're already seeing impact. It's like, it's kind of nice that it's.
I never see it as the year one in terms of what we have funding right now, you know, there's funding next year and really looking at the the EL roadmap. I always see it as a capacity building tool, like whenever you're doing something where you have a tool that's helping support or a framework is more than a tool. I mean, it is like our guiding document. But capacity building in terms of we always have new staff coming on. So I never see this as an ending cycle. I see this as a continuous cycle of improvement. Like teachers, we never stop learning and so we're always refining and so. But as long as we're funding in order to continue outside vendors and coaching. But this initiative of building capacity is something that whether we have a grant or not, is something that we can continue to do as long as we have momentum to continue working through the EL roadmap and we have our team and will bring on new people as they come and join our new team.
Great, I'm looking forward to the future.
Yeah, yeah.
Mike, fun fact, the illustrative mathematics approach to English language learner in integrated EL development is explicitly based on Stanford University's Graduate School of Education, Understanding Language Frameworks. And so it's just it it I think it underscores that like our partnership with Stanford can literally help drive how all of this curriculum is delivered like nationwide. Super cool.
And a caveat, and it's true, they do have an EL component, right? I think there's things we have to work on to make it come to life a little bit more and 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 math. And I was just talking, you know, yesterday at this thing that a lot of what we do on our current curriculum is all based on the, I call it the flat panel, which is right. We're always on the computer, always projecting. We're in the past, we used to create things in front of kids, right? And that creation cements things. There's processes that we have cemented by using pens and pencils and, you know, whatever we're doing with our hands. That is a pathway to the brain, right? We've sort of gotten away from some of those things with our kids. We you don't see classrooms print rich anymore as much as they need to be. And so some of the things we're finding with illustrative math is that for English learners, we'll show a vocabulary word and then it goes away. And there's nowhere in the room where you see it. And so English learners need to cement that vocabulary word in the room. So one of the things we have to work on is how do we create those vocabulary charts, right? So that children come alive and so that that work, there's a way to look in the room and where a child can go back and say, oh, that's what the ray is. I just we I went to this with third grade at Taft on a planning day. And we went through the vocabulary through the lesson and then we figured out like they do have it, but it's on a slide deck and it's not like on cards that we can post, right? So we need to make sure that what we're doing in all of our curriculum, that we're using the best practices of creating something that there's a reference in the room so that children always have that point of reference. And when they don't need it anymore, they won't need it. But initially they need to use it and that happens a lot in our primary grades. So and so we're really trying to work towards what else are our next steps in math to make it come alive for English learners a little bit more. There's always work to be done.
Yeah, it sounds like a nice holistic approach there. That's good.
I'll just very briefly add that when I taught high school, non-English learners had the same strategy. So I do think that is applicable across the board, all ages, all topics, like all categories. So anyway, just really helpful that you guys are doing that.
Dr. Baker.
I am just wanted to thank both Anna and Catherine for the work that's being done and continues. Dr. Sagulon, she is just amazing. You need to see her and she this this is why teachers are asking, she needs to come teach demo model in our class, demo model in our class. It's like, yeah, but we're not, we're going to get, we're going to get there, we're going to get there. She just that the energy that that she has and this gives to everyone is is amazing. I remember being in a third, fourth combination classroom at Roosevelt last year when we started. And she had those kids at the palm of her hand and the teacher was there writing all these notes of what she was doing. So whatever we can do to have her, you know, continue working with the district would be a real plus for us, you know, so. And Catherine, you being at the school sites and expecting and inspecting is is really good. So I really appreciate that a lot and so do the principals. So thank you so much.
There's no way to hire her and relocate her and her family after her.
We probably can't afford her, to be honest.
All right, thank you Catherine. Once again, yeah. All right, let's move on to our next, let's move on to our next school community report. This is six point two, the report on iReady assessment results. Anna, this one's to you.
So we'll be going over just our quick iReady. Again, this is data from the spring and our baseline for the fall. And then we we were asked by board member about some cast data. So Jenny did some longitudinal data that we could share tonight as well, just because there was a question about our our current kindergarten and looking at our TK, who kids that started TK as well. So we're starting to look at that data. I think Jenny is on. Make sure.
Yes, I'm on.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, board members. So tonight, our data focus will be on giving you some update on our student progress. Anna. Where did my, sorry.
All right.
Okay. Sorry, my camera, for some reason I turned it on, it's just automatically turn off. So I'll just leave it off.
Okay.
So here's the breakdown on our number of students by grade level and student group participate in the iReady spring assessment. Just a reminder, LTAL here is the EL student who've been English learner for seven or more years. Newcomers are EL student who born in a foreign country, who has been in US school for three or less year. So that's just a reminder on those term that we will be using throughout the presentation. Next slide, please. This slide shows side by side the fall baseline versus the spring reading placement for 2425 school year. We can see that the spring's result sipped upward with more student on above grade level and fewer deep below grade level in orange and red color. Next slide. This chart shows the distribution of reading performance for grade two through four. Between the fall, compared with the fall, we can see a steady upward shift for all three grade level. A larger share of the students move from below grade level into early on both grade level. Next slide. For grade five through eight, the performance continued to show gradual improvement between fall and spring for our grade level. However, we can see that the change is more modest compared to the primary grades, not as much. Next slide. This chart shows you how each grade level cohort is performing through each of the spring administration throughout the past four years. So for example, if you look at what's the the last group is take current eighth. So those number represent the number of students on a both grade level during the spring administration for 22, 23, 24, and then 25 school year. So it goes by cohort. The from the chart, we can see that seven and eighth grader shows good momentum with recent increase on the percentage of student above level. Grade four and four through six decline compared to previous administration, especially our sixth grader cohort, which is now our current seventh graders. They has dropped across the past four year iReady spring administration. So they started four years ago with 55% on both grade level. And each year as they take the test, they came down to 45%, 40%. And now last spring, they were at 39% for the current grade six. Next slide, please. Now that we look at how overall placement have changed, let's look at the growth. I see the board, I think, I've seen this slide, but for 2425, there was 57% of students meeting their annual expected growth, that is a 3% increase from the overall percentage compared to 24, spring 24. Okay, next slide. This slide is according to a request from a board member as we were seeing out of those 57% student who meeting the annual expected growth, what is the among those thing? What is the the placement of those students that meeting the growth? So we can see from here, the majority of the kid who will be low grade level starting the school year are those that make up the number of kids who meet the annual expected growth. So right here, most of the the three or more grade below level take 28% of all those kids who meet the annual expected growth. And then the next group is one grade below, they're 24%. They make up the 24% of the kid who meet the annual expected growth. Next slide. Now this chart show you how growth data look like for our student group in reading, starting with English learners. The proportion of the student meeting annual expected growth increased by 5% point from the prior administration. Next slide. Similar train is found in LTAL group, though LTAL shows 7% point increase between two years of annual expected growth in reading. Next slide. This is for student with disability, there's not much changes in the number of kids meeting the annual expected growth, various changes. It could be due to the percent round up to when the calculation happened. Okay. So we're moving to the math iReady for spring 2025. Again, this is the demographic makeup for the student who took this test. The math assessment is also offered in Spanish. So you see a higher number here because I'm sorry, the math assessment was offered in Spanish. So the result of the Spanish test and the English test, because it's the same test, it's a different language. So the that's why you see the number of students participate in the test is higher than in the reading. Because the reading, we have English test and then Spanish test, which is two different tests. Okay. Next slide. Here's side by side again for math placement from fall to spring. We see a clear upward shift and there are fewer students in the lower band and more students in the upper bands. Next slide. This graph again showed the math placement changes between fall and spring for the grade band from one to four. A striking figure that I'm seeing here is the large number of our first grader below grade level in yellow. So our kid in fall, starting up with 61% of their student on below grade level, on grade below level. Although they we do shifted to 55% on one grade below level in spring, but that's still a very large number of our kid on first grader below grade level. Next slide. This is the next grade span from grade level fifth through eight. Spring has a higher share up on above grade level compared to the fall. But again, we can see the majority of our students remain below grade level across all the grades. Next slide. This is the cohort data for math trained throughout four years. We can see that our fourth grade cohort, the first group, has a consistent increase in the process of both grade level. While our in upper grade, grade six to eight have show consistent decline every year on the number of students on above level. Next slide. Here is the growth data for math. There are fewer students meet annual expected growth in math compared to reading from year over year. So only about 1%. That could also be the the difference in, you know, round up and round down percentage. Okay, next slide. Here is the component of the student placement that make up the student who meeting the annual expected growth. So the 40% of students are meeting expected growth. Most of them are made up by students who were below grade level. And a large chunk of them from come student who were one grade below level. Those are the students who make that more of those students. Those are the student who make um, the more of those student meeting the annual expected growth. Okay, next slide. Here is um, how our EL student is doing in term of I Ready Math. Um, uh, meeting the annual expected growth. Just very minimal year to year, um, for the past two year of growth. Next slide. Here is Eltel group, which have the same trend, um, very flat year to year annual expected growth in math. Next slide. Student with disability, um, unfortunately in twenty four, twenty five, there's fewer of our student meeting the expected growth compared to the um, twenty three, twenty four administration. Okay. So that was the twenty four, twenty five I Ready data. We are um, gonna look at this year for data on reading. Next slide. Um, the fall reading diagnostic, as we all know, give us a baseline to measure our student growth. Um, compare now to the next time they take the test, which is this winter. Across the three, four snapshot, we can see that reading placement is mostly flat. We are at similar starting point each school year. We'll use this page baseline to see how much our student will grow by mid-year winter testing. The goal is to see more progress each year from similar starting point. So if we're starting the same um, percentage of kid on each of these category, hopefully by winter, that would be big different compared to previous years. Next slide. Um, what we are seeing here again is majority of our current grade first grader again this fall of starting the school year reading below grade level um, compared to their peers grade in second through four. Um, our third grader are doing much better in this fall baseline test. Um, they also have a um, if you go back and look at the cohort last year, they actually doing better than last year, third grader cohort in the fall baseline. So. Next slide. Um, this is the grade span, grade span fifth through eight. The data here reflect a pan that we have been consistently seen in the past I Ready analysis. As the grade level increase, their math performance tends to vary more with few students meeting the grade level expectation. Um, the eighth grader group in this chart, um, the, the gap is the largest. As you can see, um, eighth grader have the most number of student on level. Um, but they also have the most number of student three or more grade below level. So that's a big gap among the eighth grader. Next slide. Next slide. Wait. No, okay. Um, so um, the next couple of slide are showing how our peer school are doing in term of their I for I Ready reading placement. Starting up with Kennedy and McKinley, you can see that compared to McKinley, Kennedy is a higher, have a higher share of on a both level and a much lower share of three grade below level. Though for both school, majority of our student are still remain below grade levels in fall reading. Next slide. Um, North Star Academy here is far ahead in reading, uh, with the majority of their student on a both grade level. While Orion and Roy Cloud have majority of their student below grade level um, on their fall baseline reading. Next slide. Um, among Adelante, Clifford and Henryford, Clifford has the highest reading on a both grade level. However, Clifford also have the largest number of student who are three or more grade below. Okay, next. Um, this is the last four school that are, we're com- that we are putting side by side. Roosevelt has the strong, strongest reading baseline. Um, and the, because they also have the least number of student with three or more grade below. Hoover have the most um, kid with three uh, grade level below. Garfield is almost entirely below grade level for entire school. And then there you see Taft kind of sit between the other schools. Okay. Um, so that is reading. We're moving on to math. Um, we also see the same pattern in math across the last fall, the last three, four snapshot, math placement is flat. Especially um, we have more student this year, this fall, we have more student at three or more grade belows level compared to um, the past two falls. Next slide. Um, for grade two to four, more than eighty percent of our second and third grader are also below grade level in math. Okay, next slide. In the grade five through A span, um, our younger graders, fifth and sixth graders tend to perform better than our upper grades um, on the, on their fall baseline math. Next slide. Okay, um, moving on to um, looking at the similar school. The gap between the Kennedy and MRT remain wide in math also. Um, but also majority of the student in both school are below grade level. Next slide. And then North Star clearly leads again with most of the student on a both grade level. Um, Orion and Royla, Roy Cloud have most of their student below grade level. Uh, with the deepest focus on the one grade below. So both school have a big chunk of their kid, one grade below in math. Next slide. Um, again, we see here Clifford has the strongest, strongest math placement with more student on a both grade level. Um, Adelante and Henryford um, have also a big chunk, almost half of their kids were one grade below level. Next slides. Um, among these last four school that we're looking at, Roosevelt's is comparatively stronger in math. Um, while Hoover and Garfield have the largest number of student um, in the, in the red area, which is three or more grade below. And then here you see again, Taft is kind of sitting in between um, the peer schools. Okay, so that is the end of the I Ready. Um, the following slides are something we add on by a board member request, um, as we want to look at. Um, does our cast performance different by enrollment history? So this is data is trying to answer this question, especially we are comparing our third grader enrolled since Kinder with R C S D and those who enter later. So this figure sheet here shows you the percent of student in general ed. So this does not include special ed um, third grader. So this shows the number of kids who meet exit standard across three year of assessment. And we're comparing the student who continuously enroll versus student who enter um, R C S D later after Kinder. For student enrolled since kindergarten, the meet and exit rate is higher and has been rising up each year. Uh, for non-continuous student, it declined this year. And so that's kind of widening the gap between the two groups. Okay. Next slide. Um, so this slide is focused on English learner and again, non-special ed is included. Uh, for our EL third graders, the gap between continuously and versus non-continuous group remain kind of stable over the past two year of classification. Though kids, English learner who've been enrolled with us since Kinder tend to um, perform better um, than those who enter in the district later. Next slide, next slide. Um, for a student with social economic disadvantage, um, continuous enrollees tend to tickle up a little bit each year while the non-continuous decline this year. So it's kind of widened the gap. So it, they are currently at twelve percent points percentage apart between those two group. Next slide. Um, so this slide focuses on just special ed student. For special ed third graders, both group of student who continues versus non-continuous, they both dip in twenty thirty three, four administration. And they both rebound in twenty four, twenty five administration. Um, however, you can see the student who, the non-continuous student, spet student, um, they tend to close the gap with our kids, um, who've been continuously enrolled in third graders. Okay. So that is the end of the presentation and um, is open up for question if anyone have questions.
Thanks Jenny for presenting all that data um, from last year and from this fall. Uh, yeah, let's uh, open it up to questions, comments. Um, would anyone like to start? Fire away Jen.
I, I know it's a, it's a topic where there's some, not a lot of clarity. Uh, Jenny, my, my question was, and just again for my own understanding, in our LCAP, Anna, we have this four percent growth. Is that from the fall to the?
Fall to spring.
No.
No, no.
Oh, what is it Jenny, isn't it?
The four percent is the year to year increase of the growth. So um, if you go back to slide